Good evening. I'd like to call the Region 15 Board of Education meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Student representatives, Kelly and Liam.
Hi, everybody. We had a very eventful weekend this past weekend, and so I'd like to start off with the art show, which I bet a lot of you actually went to. And this occurred from 6:00 to 9:00 on Friday, and 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday. And there was artwork presented from all of the region's elementary schools, middle schools, and of course Pom Rock High School. And it also included in the AP room, six AP art students' displays, which were very interesting if any of you got the opportunity to go and look at them. Also this past weekend was the Pom Rock Musical, which was Little Women. And this was put on by the Pom Rock Theater Company. And it occurred on Friday at 7:30, Saturday at 7:30, and Sunday at 2:30, so it was a nice matinee there. And the show was a real success. I got to go see it myself, and hopefully some of you got to see it as well. And it also featured live music, which was played by Pom Rock students in the pit. So it was a really good collaboration between the theater department and the music department. This Thursday, the names program will occur. And in this program, Pom Rock upperclassmen lead the program for the sophomores at Pom Rock. And they help the students discuss bullying and other issues dealing with school that students sometimes aren't comfortable enough to talk about amongst themselves. So it really helps make the class comfortable with themselves and their classmates. And also on Thursday is Mr. Pom Rock, and that's at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And most of you guys have probably heard about it. Mr. Pom Rock is a male pageant where senior boys compete for the title of Mr. Pom Rock. And it's always a very fun event to go to, and it helps raise money for the student council. So it's a great thing to do on a Thursday evening if you're not doing anything. I'll be there. AP exams start on this Monday, May 4th, and they go through Friday, May 15th. And also dealing with colleges, the deadline for committing to a college is May 1st, so that's coming up very quickly. And a lot of seniors still have that decision to make, so good luck to all of them.
Okay, so last Wednesday, the Pom Rock Robotics team boarded a bus to St. Louis to go to the first robotics championship. This is the first team that the robotics team has ever made it this far. And at the championship, there were more than 600 schools from around the world. They said it was a great experience and one that they hope to go to again. There's a lot of news for sports. I can't get through all the scores, but there are more in-depth reports on the Pom Rock website. The boys varsity baseball team won their last two games against Brookfield and Weston. And they're on a -- they've won a total of four games this season. They had a game against Brookfield today here at PHS at 4:15. The girls varsity field hockey have an amazing record of 13 and 2 and are on a four-game winning streak, so good job to them. The boys varsity tennis team has a record of 4 and 1, and they had a match today at Newtown at 3:15. The girls varsity tennis has a record of 4 and 2 with a home game against Newtown at 3:00 here today. And then the boys golf team has not lost a match in three years, and they have a -- they're on a four-match winning streak. There's a lot of different things going on for seniors and juniors in the upcoming weeks as far as permission forms go. The permission forms for prom are being collected this week, and that's for juniors and seniors. You can pay during your lunch wave at a cost of $75. And the prom is on May 31st, so that's coming up soon. The permission forms for the senior trip to Six Flags New England are also being collected this week at a cost of $55 per student. And then the senior banquet permission forms are being collected this week as well, and that's on June 3rd, and the cost is $20. So a reminder to all juniors and seniors to get those permission forms filled in because they are all fun events.
Thank you. Any questions of Liam and Kelly? Okay, thank you. Presentations.
Well, I just have to say, from robotics to art to music to theater to athletics, it's certainly been a banner week at the high school. So, thank you, Liam and Kelly. And it is our great pleasure and quite an honor this evening to honor our PTO volunteers. Thank you, all of you, for being here. Thank you for your work that you do tirelessly to support us and to support our students. I will ask the principals to come up. The order is listed on the agenda. Teresa, you got it. You're first. And to please introduce your PTO Volunteer of the Year, so that we can all appropriately thank them for their contributions.
It's a great pleasure that I introduce to you our two PS Volunteers of the Year, Laura Legg and Lisa Segal. You get to come on up here and stand next to me. Over the past five years, I've gotten to know these two ladies very well, and I can tell you, I really respect and admire both of them. They do so much for our school behind the scenes. Currently, they're the co-presidents of our PTO. They've been involved with the PTO since, both of them pretty much since they moved to the district. Laura moved here in 2010 and was quickly nabbed, and Lisa has been actively involved since 2011. They both work tirelessly to support the school, and as I said, often behind the scenes, making sure that the committee work is moving along so that all of the activities the PTO sponsors get off the ground without a hitch. And they always do, thanks to them. They are both advocates for the school and our teachers and have been class parents over the years. They participate actively on many PTO committees, such as the teacher supply drive, the celebration of reading, and dancing under the stars, to name just a few. They both worked on the 5th grade party last year as well, and in addition, each chairs committees. Laura has, for many years, co-chaired the back-to-school family picnic, which -- and the end-of-year carnival, two events that are almost every family attends. And Lisa successfully resurrected the after-school enrichment program, which is a wonderful program at our school. She's chaired the Holiday Bazaar for several years, and this year took over as chair of the teacher grant program. They're both truly deserving of this recognition, and I'm so happy that they're both standing here next to me tonight. Do you want each principal to call the next one, or will you?
That would be lovely.
Okay. The next school is Middlebury Elementary School, and Ms. Phelps is on.
Thank you, Ms. Forest. Good evening. It's my very great pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Darlene Capozzi, the MES Volunteer of the Year. Darlene serves as the co-Vice President of the MES PTO. And this year alone, she spearheaded fall fundraising, coordinated MES quasi-night, and created and ran a hugely popular after-school enrichment yoga program. And these are just the most recent in an impressive list of ways that Darlene has supported MES over the years. Darlene has been a fixture on the MES board for many years, and also represented MES to the PTO Advisory Council. She has served repeatedly as a room parent, often for more than one class at a time. And the list of ways that Darlene has supported the MES PTO over the years literally goes on and on. As she resigns this year from the MES PTO Executive Board at the end of the year, we know that it is the end of an era. And the staff and students at MES are very proud to honor Darlene as our Volunteer of the Year. And I'm going to turn it over to GES.
Board of Ed, thank you very much for this opportunity to present two fantastic volunteers as representatives of the Gainfield Volunteers of the Year. I'm proud to present to you Mrs. Gina Farah and Mrs. Stacy Cobrak. First, let me start by introducing Gina. Mrs. Farah is a parent of Morgan in 3rd grade at Gainfield, and the Farah family enrolled at Gainfield just a few years ago in 2012. In that short time, Gina has become a perennial presence at Gainfield, and example of volunteerism in our school. In 2012, she started off slowly, taking charge of the PTO Bulletin Board and co-chairing the Holiday Fair, chairperson for the staff holiday breakfast, and the chairperson for the Teacher Appreciation Week. In 2013 and 14, Gina's volunteerism picked up a little bit of speed. She was officially Vice President of Fundraising. She planned the new student orientation, served as co-chair of the Holiday Fair, and for our new mustache fundraiser, complete with fun infomercials of students and teachers to promote the event. They were made by Gina herself. Mrs. Farah acted as the chairperson of the staff holiday breakfast and Teacher Appreciation Week again. Oh yeah, and in her extra time, she helped level classroom libraries throughout the school. Currently, there is not one PTO activity that doesn't have her fingerprints all over it. I would say mainly that's because she's acting as the co-chair for the GES PTO. But her most notable volunteer activities are new student orientation, back-to-school ice cream social, co-chair of the Holiday Fair, chairperson for staff holiday breakfast, and chairperson of the Teacher Appreciation Week yet again. Last week, we just wrapped up a very successful school fundraiser, Diamonds and Denim Event, chaired by Gina and Stacy. And it was a fantastic fundraiser. We're looking forward to bringing back the mustache event in June, under Gina's attentive leadership, to raise money for Yale New Haven Children's Hospital. Her support for Gainfield epitomizes the very best of what it means to volunteer one's time and talents to benefit an organization. On behalf of the students and staff and school, I would like to say thank you to you, Gina, for your -- and it's an honor to have you as a Volunteer of the Year at Gainfield. Next, I'd like to present Mrs. Stacy Cobrak as our second Volunteer of the Year. Mrs. Cobrak has been a GES parent for many years. Jack and Aiden, now 6th graders at Rochambeau, passed through Gainfield, and now her youngest, Caroline, is in kindergarten. Quiet and unassuming, at quick glance, you might not notice that her list of her volunteer activities is long and varied. Let me start by her support of teaching and learning. For the past seven years, you could find Stacy acting as a classroom volunteer and a regular weekly volunteer in the media center to help sort books and help students select out their favorites. For the past two years, Stacy has served as Secretary of the GES PTO. She even managed to get her husband, George, involved in the PTO as treasurer. Now, I would say that that's a person with some real clout. In addition, Stacy helped plan our annual Gainfield Carnivals each year. She has served as the co-chair of many committees, including, as I mentioned before, the successful and very fun Diamonds and Denim Event last week, a Super Bowl breakfast, Dads and Donuts, and an annual Holiday Fair. We even got her to dress up in a life-size cougar costume this year as a part of one of our Gainfield gatherings. It was great to see Stacy dressed up as Calvin the Cougar, dancing, high-fiving, and greeting each child as they entered our regular whole-school celebration. I would say that's a very dedicated volunteer. Mrs. Cobrak is a regular presence at Gainfield, and the generous gift of her time has greatly benefited our school and our community. Since her youngest Caroline is in kindergarten, I know that all of this is just a sign of even more great things to come. On behalf of the students -- that wasn't a plug or anything. On behalf of the students and staff of the school, I'd like to say thank you to Stacy and honor her as our second Volunteer of the Year. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to invite Mr. Rich Gustenberg up from Long Meadow.
I'd like to start off by introducing to you Mrs. Jessica Clark. Mrs. Clark is the Long Meadow Volunteer of the Year this year, our PTO president, someone who is in the building constantly. By the way, we just renamed or named our Long Meadow Leopard Rory under Jessica's tutelage this past week, and we'll take on the cougar one of these days. Jessica, I've been in the school system a long, long time, and I've been with a lot of PTOs over the years, and have been absolutely amazed at how much our PTOs accomplish for Region 15. And it's seen throughout the room, in every single person that's here. Jessica epitomizes that. She's in the building as much as I am, 30, 40, 50 hours a week overseeing various events, overseeing every activity that the PTO is involved with over the course of the year. We do fundraising. They've purchased materials for the playground. They've purchased equipment for the schools. They've run events for the children. They've paid for authors and cultural arts programs. And every single one of these, Jessica doesn't just oversee as president, but gets actively involved with. She's there at all times, heavily, heavily involved right from day one. For me, it's been an absolute joy to come back to the school system, to get to work with somebody like Jessica day in and day out. I will tell you, and she'll smile, the very first meeting I ever had with her, it shows my age, she came in, she sat down, she looked at me, she said, "You know, you were my kindergarten principal." She's grown up, and we thank her very much for it. And Mr. Seiler from Memorial School.
So pleased to have this opportunity to recognize three very special people. And they are Paula Barron, Erin Hawker, and Joanna Naylor. They are my Volunteers of the Year for Memorial Middle School. Please recognize them. Paula is the mother of 7th grade daughter Sydney, is our PTO's treasurer, and also a paraprofessional at Gainfield Elementary School. Erin is the mother to Memorial's 6th grader Abigail, and also Jonathan, and this year has been an active and valuable member of our middle school study committee. Joanna is mom to Memorial's 6th grader Catherine, and also our PTO's recording secretary. They represent a PTO that really doesn't have the capacity to say no. And throughout the year have been asked many good questions and asked for many different resources from many different teachers and teams of teachers. And in every instance, they seem to always say yes. I'm always reluctant to be in the middle of those negotiations because middle school is always difficult. You always feel like you're asking too much of parents who are working that very tenuous withdrawal from being at their child's side every day all year long. These folks do a marvelous job of walking that tightrope. This year, I'd like to recognize this threesome for caring so much about our Memorial students from that safe distance, and that they had the requisite blind enthusiasm and courage to say yes to planning and organizing our second-ever spring fundraiser from scratch. When the notion was first mentioned at a PTO meeting last fall, I cowered in my chair and figured that no one would be crazy enough to say yes to take on such a challenge when you have seven people at a PTO meeting and five of those are officers. And yet, they said, "Yes, we can do this," and they did. Just in this past year, PTO funds have allowed us to buy Lego robotic kits, a flat-screen monitor for tech ed classes, two new Chromebook computers-on-wheeled carts for distribution around our building, a new portable PA system for indoor and outdoor activities, new United States flagpole for our Veterans Day and other school assemblies. We've had teacher grants that have been funded. We've had cultural art events that have been fully funded by the PTO. And it's this kind of volunteerism that we really need to thank and recognize. These three celebrities, and they really are celebrities this night, are recognized for designing and printing all the tickets and posters and public announcements, cajoling numerous community businesses into making many valuable silent auction donations, arm-twisting several wine and beer tasting merchants in and out of the area, accumulating a huge and amazing assortment of finger foods and desserts for everybody's pleasure, and then capping off with live music for the evening. In other words, all the ingredients that added up to a very profitable April/Spring fundraiser. Please join me in thanking these three wonderful, wonder women for their limitless efforts to help enrich our middle school.
I am pleased to introduce Ms. Katie Sikowsky and Ms. Gabby Addison as this year's co-volunteers of the year for Rochambeau Middle School. First, I'd like to share some words about Ms. Sikowsky. Katie has worked behind the scenes as corresponding secretary to support all PTO efforts for the past few years. She jumps in at a moment's notice to ensure that information is disseminated to the RMS parent community, and provides much-needed guidance and assistance to support each and every PTO and RMS activity. Given her technical expertise, she's also taken the responsibility of regularly posting items and updating the PTO website, so our greater school community is always informed. It's sometimes difficult to make your present felt when you're working behind the scenes. In a quiet and careful manner, Katie has provided consistent and steadfast support of our program. Katie has ensured that all activities are successful and that appropriate communication has been maintained to ensure that people have been kept informed regarding those activities. She's distinguished herself as a consummate professional, offering keen insight regarding PTO initiatives to support our efforts. She's been a go-to person to support the board and has provided much-needed guidance and expertise behind the scenes. Katie is leaving us at the end of the year as her son moves up to the high school next year. We certainly appreciate her efforts to keep our parents informed and support many of the PTO-related initiatives behind the scenes. We know that whatever role that Katie assumes moving forward, she will consistently work towards supporting Region 15 in the best interests of our students and staff. Now for Ms. Addison. Gabby has participated in a variety of capacities this year to support our efforts at Rochambeau. She's most notably connected to our fall and spring clothing drive efforts to raise significant funds for our school. She allows the community, and I mean everyone, to stop by her home and drop off items in her barn that has become a repository of items throughout the year. She single-handedly coordinates our clothing drive, coordinates volunteers to support this initiative, and organizes the collection from beginning to end. Additionally, she supports our peer tutoring program, provides additional assistance to support our efforts with students assisting other students. At least weekly, Gabby is often found in our school supporting students and helping others at RMS. She's a cheerleader for many of the events at RMS and never misses an opportunity to give her thoughtful input to a new idea to bring it to reality. Her role as past PTO president at the elementary level has provided quality experience and perspective to help us with event planning and to navigate around the number of challenging issues. She has a strong voice, very strong voice, but is often backed by proven experience and dedication. Gabby ensures that she's actively involved in many of the RMS events. She served as a parent-coach for our Odyssey of the Mine team and has been an inspiration behind the book exchange at RMS to encourage students sharing books with other students. She has spent countless hours at RMS and certainly committed to supporting our students and staff. For those who know Gabby, she's resilient and does not sit back and watch. She volunteers to support many activities and quickly finds herself assuming a leadership capacity. I'm pleased to introduce both of our ladies as our co-volunteers of the year. And last but not least, Mr. Glenn Lagarini for PHS.
Good evening, and again, thank you for the opportunity to recognize the volunteers that have brought so much to the school and our students at Pom Rock High School. We have four volunteers. One unfortunately was unable to make it this evening, but we will talk about her as well. Let me introduce to you who is here. We have Deborah McGlockery, Maria Papyro, and Sharon Gustavhoven. Not present tonight is Mary Silverman. She's probably running fundraisers. That's just good. First, let me tell you a little bit about Deborah McGlockery. Any student or staff member who participates in the Pom Rock Theater or Music Department has been affected by the efforts of Deborah McGlockery. For the past seven years, Deborah has served on the Board of Directors for Friends of Pom Rock Music, in addition to her role as recording secretary. Deborah often assumes a leadership role amongst parents by coordinating fundraising activities, securing volunteers, chaperoning trips, and handling concert uniform distribution and collection for students. She also coordinates publicity and fundraising for the Pom Rock Theater Group and was integral in the development of the Pom Rock Theater Scholarship. This year, in her volunteer efforts, will reach beyond the music and theater departments as Deborah is organizing a mock DUI event which will be observed by the entire student body. It's with great pressure that the Panther community recognizes the impact Deborah has had on our programs. Thank you, Deborah. Maria Papyro's selflessness and dedication to providing a safe, yet exciting and fun experience for our students is the inspiration behind our wonderful Grad Night event. Maria has been involved with Grad Night for the past 10 years, serving as chairperson for the last eight. Holding a successful Grad Night means dedicating countless hours of organization, communication, and outreach from August to June each school year. As a result of her commitment and caring, our graduating seniors conclude their high school career with one last memorable experience that is sure to last a lifetime. In addition to Grad Night, Maria also volunteers as the aquatic supervisor of the Panther Aquatic Club. This club has been the foundation for athletes that have gone on to PHS and established a rich history of one of the most competitive and successful boys and girl swimming programs in the state of Connecticut, as well as receiving national recognition. It is with great appreciation that the Panther community recognizes Maria for her contributions to her students' positive experience at Pom Rock High School. Thank you, Maria. Few parents have contributed as generously of their time and efforts as Sharon Gustavhoven. Sharon has been actively involved in PTO for 14 years. During that time, she served as volunteer coordinator at PES, RMS, and PHS. She served as treasurer at PES for three years, served as coordinating secretary and president at RMS, and is currently serving as volunteer coordinator, fundraising chairperson, and co-president of the PTO at PHS. Sharon is visible and Sharon is visible and recognizable volunteer at PHS, where she can often be found working picture day, teacher luncheons. Additionally, Sharon brought in student programs, such as the distracted driving speakers, and was one of the coordinators for PHS's first-ever Field Day, which has now become an annual event. Those who have had the pleasure of working with Sharon would tell you that her positive attitude and calming influence is a driving force behind the success of many of our programs. It is an honor to recognize Sharon for her many contributions to PHS and Region 15 over the last 14 years. Thank you, Sharon. And unable to attend this evening, the energy effort, work ethic, and smile of Mary Silverman have been infectious motivators for anyone who has volunteered at PHS. Mary has served as PHS PTO president or co-president for the past four years. In addition, she has served on the PTO Advisory Board and the Board of Education PTO Liaison for PES, RMS, and currently PHS. Mary consistently exemplifies the definition of a volunteer by going above and beyond by not only working, but setting up and breaking down events such as picture day and teacher luncheons. Mary took on the role of chairperson for PHS's Field Day, organizing the staff involved in securing items needed to create a successful event that has become a highlight experience for students each year. Whether it is baking items or purchasing supplies for events or selflessly giving of her time, Mary is willing to volunteer at every event and can always be counted on to ensure the success of a program. Mary is a terrific role model and mentor for our students on the value of volunteerism and giving back to the community, and is an honor and a pleasure to recognize Mary for the inspiration and joy she brings to the PHS and Region 15 community. Congratulations and thank you to all our volunteers.
I'd like to thank the volunteers of the year for their effort and time that they put into it. Your credentials are staggering. You have no idea how much it's appreciated by the board, and we are able to purchase materials for our schools that would probably, we would not be able to do it if it weren't for your efforts. So, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Okay, we'll move on.
Mrs. Lyman, kindergarten through grade five, performance report.
So far, you're not seeing anything on the screen, are you? Liam?
Yeah.
No, he had it set up before I started. All right, well, I'm gonna let Ty set that up, and I'm gonna start. Yes, can you do that?
We're waiting for it to...
Okay, that's fine. I have an intro, so. Tonight's presentation is going to be focused on reading performance in our elementary schools. The data that I'm sharing with you this evening are data that are gathered at the classroom level. This is a little bit different report than has been shared with you in the past. It's an effort to share with you what happens at the classroom and school level as we continue to monitor student performance and identify performance against some standards that we've established for students in every grade level. The type of assessment that we do that you're going to hear about tonight is much more complex than state assessment data. State assessment data is easy to gather. We give the students a test and we get back their scores. In the data that you're going to see this evening, it's done by training teachers in methodologies to recognize how to gather data and in calibrating teachers' work with each of their students to ensure that data are being gathered in reliable and valid ways. That takes some ongoing professional development and a lot of conversation with our teachers. At the same time, it gives teachers the opportunity to talk with their colleagues about the performance of their students and together work to ensure that all students are meeting our standards. We measure reading performance in a couple of ways. As I've already mentioned, the state data, those are called summative assessment data, assessments that are completed at the end of instruction. But before that, we use classroom-based assessment or formative data. This is a type of assessment that allows us to monitor progress over time as students are learning. It informs our instruction. It's information that teachers can use on a daily basis to shape the instruction that they provide to students. On the screen, you see a variety of types of assessments that we use. Some for the earliest grades measure pre-reading skills. As students begin to develop their reading skills, we measure both their reading accuracy and their reading fluency, which includes comprehension. And as mentioned, the standardized assessment, the summative data comes at the end of the year. The other thing that we have done is that we have created a standards-based report card in our elementary grades. In order to grade students against a standard, we need to clearly articulate the expectations for every grade. This is one way that we gather data to help us determine the degree to which our students have been successful. We have clearly defined expectations in reading, in multiple areas of reading actually, for every grade across our elementary schools, and we use multiple measures, a variety of assessment gathering tools, to help us determine whether or not students have met those standards. Just to give you an example of that, if you were to look at our reading report card, you would see that there are multiple indicators or standards of behavior or performance that we measure for each student. The page that's on the screen here is a page that comes from the teacher's guide to the report card. We've developed very clear expectations for each of the standards that appear on the report card. This happens to be a grade-three page. So, a grade-three teacher in filling out a report card for a student under reading looks at this standard, which happens to be uses a variety of skills, to decode words to understand text, identifies which assessments she might have given already that helps her make that determination, and then looking under the benchmark level columns can see what the expected performance is for that single standard in November, when the first report card goes home, in March, at the end of that second marking term, and in June, at the end of the year. This is a very well-prescribed set of expectations, and again, we have a page that looks like this for each of the standards on the report card for every grade. How do we use this information? Well, we use it to monitor performance certainly over time, but at the end of the year, we ask the teacher to look at all of the reading performance data in the aggregate for each student and to make a determination as to whether or not overall that student has met our reading standard for the end of the year. Again, the page that you saw up there, there's a similar page that helps our teachers know how to look at data in the aggregate. It allows us at the end of the year to determine for each student whether or not they met the grade-level expectation. That in turn is data that we can use to help us monitor the effectiveness of our instruction across the grades. This chart shows you the end-of-year performance in reading for our students in grades K through five, the numbers indicating in the yes column the numbers of students that met our grade-level expectations, and in the no column, the numbers of students who are still working to meet those expectations. This chart shows that we had a range of from 84.5% of our students meeting end-of-year reading standards to 96.1% of our students meeting those end-of-year standards. So that's one way to look at data. Another way we look at data is to monitor progress throughout the year. Again, teachers utilize many informal assessment methods to monitor week by week in order to focus their instruction and to ensure that students are reading in text that are just right for where they are instructionally. We give some more formal assessments to benchmark students. These more formal assessments indicate where students should be at a certain time in year of year in order to meet the standard that's expected by the end of the year. Most of the benchmark assessments that we use are individually administered, meaning that we ask students to engage in actual reading aloud and silently with the teacher. The teacher monitors or records the fluency and accuracy of the student's reading and then engages the student in a comprehension assessment. This is what we've learned from our benchmark data in the fall. These assessments are typically given three times a year, the first one being in mid- beginning in mid-September. Takes a couple of weeks for teachers to get through all students. We do expect a little bit of summer slide. In other words, where students left in June is not always exactly how they're measured when they come into the next school year. But again, we're evaluating their performance against expected fall performance, not end-of-year performance, but fall performance. You can see by this slide, we identify students as meeting our expectation, exceeding the benchmark expectation, near it or below it. The first two columns exceeds and meets, I thought, were important for you to see because large numbers of our students either are beyond the fall benchmark measure or meet it. In fact, in the third column, you'll see that range from 66.1% to 79.4% of our students come into the school year demonstrating that they are meeting the expectations for that time of year. We look at those data again in the winter, and we look to see whether or not similar numbers of students are still meeting expectations or whether or not we've been able to get more students to meet those expectations. Again, you'll see even larger numbers of students now in the winter who are exceeding expectations. A significant number still meeting, in fact, now the range is from 78.3% to 90% of our students are demonstrating by the winter that they are meeting the expectation for that time of year. Just to show you a comparison, you'll see grade-by-grade comparison, meeting or exceeding nearer or below from fall to winter. The green highlights show students who, show areas, excuse me, where we have made growth. The yellow highlights shows areas where we've remained steady. And fortunately, there's no red, because if we had any areas where fewer students were meeting expectations, I would have highlighted those in red, so that's really great news. I also show you in that last column, the percentage of students that are exceeding. I think this is very interesting data. We've identified that in Region 15 elementary schools, very high numbers of students are exceeding expectations for the winter term, where they should be reading by this time of the year, or by the winter in each grade level. You'll notice that those numbers, in some cases, are significantly higher than they were in the fall. We'd like to attribute that to good instruction and opportunities for students to continue to grow and expand their own reading knowledge. Now, there's a third way we measure student performance as well, and that's measuring growth. Because not only is it important that students meet our benchmark, that they are demonstrating that they are meeting our expectations by their grade level, we also want to ensure that child by child, that they're also growing and that they're maintaining at least one year's growth in the year in which they are in school. We do this using a metric that we call the progressions chart. This comes from some research that we found that helps identify month by month, as students progress in reading skills, how the complexity of text should change at each grade level. Let me give you an example of that chart. This chart shows you in the first three rows, September through June, in the lowest text levels. So, we used to call them reading levels, right? You were on a 1.1 or 1.5 reading level. Well, we now refer to text levels. You may remember in some of the other presentations I've given, I've shown you two different texts and talked to you about the complexity of text. These text levels identify a readability level for sure, but they're much more discreet than the old grade-level reading levels we used to use. A student coming in in kindergarten is expected to be at the very lowest levels, those ABC levels. That's a typical entering reading level for a kindergartner. If you follow those first three columns along, you can see that a student who entered the school year, let's say, coming in at a B text level, should grow as identified here onto C by October, onto D by November. The additional number in each of those slides, in the lower grades, we use a combination or we interchange sometimes numeric levels and alphabetic levels, so just explain the two levels. But again, you can see how students are to progress. You may notice that in this child who entered at B level, that by April, that level H continues for three months. So, this is not as simple as saying, "Well, they're gonna progress one level a month." Depends on the complexity of the level, how quickly a child moves past it. That's why these progression charts are so important to us. Look at the bottom three columns. This is a child QRS, that's a child who's probably going to be in fourth grade. Child entering fourth grade would enter in September somewhere at that starting level. Looks particularly at the child who enters at an S level, and you'll see that by June, the child should be at a V. Now, that's only three levels higher, and it's just the very beginning stages of the V, but that's because STU texts are much more challenging, and the rate of progression through those texts is much slower than the easier texts that children would have encountered, say, in kindergarten. So, this progression chart has become very important to us. It's a way for us to monitor individual students month by month in every grade. As we've done that in our schools, this is what we've found. We looked at progression levels for students in the fall, excuse me, text levels in the fall, and then text levels again in the winter. Based on the months in which they were assessed and comparing it to the progressions chart that I just showed you, we've identified large percentages of our students who are making one year's growth and are on track to meet or exceed the end-of-year expectation. In this case, I did not break out those students meeting and those students exceeding, but know that the percentage of students listed here are making a minimum of one year's growth. Again, you can see a good range of students, everywhere from 76% of our students in second grade to 96% of our students in third grade are on track to make one year's growth in the current school year. So, taken together, these measures all help us monitor student achievement and ensure that not only are students receiving the just-right instruction that they need to continue to develop their reading skills, but that we, as a district, are being successful ensuring that all of our students, or very, very large percentages of our students, are meeting our expectations for their reading performance. In conclusion, you can see that we have a clear process for monitoring progress, providing us with information that helps us as we continue to meet students' needs throughout the year. These formative classroom assessments indicate that the percentage of students, a high percentage of students, excuse me, are on track to meet end-of-year expectations, that greater numbers of students exceed expectations as the year progresses, that a year's growth or more can be expected from 90% or more of our students in grades three through five, and that while we have a slightly slower percent of our first and second graders progressing to meet a year's growth, we have been able to identify students in those grades who need additional supports and have been working with them, and we expect to see those numbers increase based on our experiences from the past as the spring continues. So, there's a snapshot of what we do in our elementary classrooms to both monitor student performance and to ensure that even without the opportunity to look at statewide summative data, that we can be sure that our students are continuing to progress at the levels they need to, to be successful. Questions?
Ms. Lyman?
Go ahead, Paul.
First of all, who sets the standards? Are these state standards that we're looking at for reading levels?
Those progression levels are set through research, so we use the research of two very well-known researchers. Actually, these are nationally and internationally benchmarked levels, so we did not identify these ourselves.
And the other question I have, if I look at some of these charts, which I'm not sure I fully understand, but it seems like if we have a student coming in, we're looking at... at a one-year progression for that student, but that student may not be taught at a level of someone that came in at a higher level.
That's right.
How do we balance that? Shouldn't we be trying to get the lower student at that top level by the end of that year? And how do we manage to do that?
Yeah, so that's why we look at two types of measurement. We look at the progressions to make sure that we're keeping every individual child moving at a constant pace. So the student who is at grade level, that's easy. We hope to see that student move at a certain pace. The student above grade level, we have just as much responsibility to ensure that that student makes a year's growth. And if we were only looking at the benchmark, at where we've established the level, then that student that's above level, we may not be doing enough for them. This progression chart helps that. The student that you described that's below level, we want to make sure that that student actually makes more than a year's growth, because otherwise, how are we going to get them up to that level? Which is why we use multiple ways to measure progress. That benchmark level that I described before, the one that says by the fall of this, of third grade, you should be at this level, helps us to know whether or not the child's meeting the benchmark. But at the same time, we're monitoring to make sure that child is continuing to progress. One of the things that can happen with struggling students is that they plateau. They make progress for a little while, and then they get stuck. By using the progressions chart, we can make sure that we're continuing to advance them, even though they may still be below. So we are, we're not excusing the child from meeting benchmark, we're using both measures.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. In some of the data, you include kindergarten data, but in the last bit of data, you don't include kindergarten.
Yeah. Why is that? Because we have not been using the progressions chart with our kindergarteners, because most of them come in as non-readers, and we haven't, we don't trust the reliability of the progressions chart with kindergarteners. So right now, with kindergarteners, we're only using the benchmark levels.
I guess my other question is, did, this is an average of all four of our
Yes, it is.
elementary schools. Did you find that there was much variation from school to school?
There is a little bit of variation based on cohorts of students, but the really interesting thing is that we've been able to look at these data across the four schools with our principals and with our reading consultants, so that they can coordinate their efforts with each other. We're not finding a particular school that shows lower performance than another school. We're just finding some cohorts, like a particular grade in one place, or a particular grade in another place maybe struggling more.
Question for you. Now that we're almost into two years of full-day kindergarten, what are you finding with our reading program? Has it helped? And in what ways has it helped with full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, you may remember last year, when I reported to the board on the sort of return on investment of kindergarten, we looked at the performance of our kindergarteners. One thing that happened with Common Core is that the expectations in reading increased pretty significantly in kindergarten and in first grade. And that end-of-year report card data illustrates that we got a very large percentage of our kindergarteners in the first day of full day to meet that more aggressive end-of-year expectation. The data that I've seen this winter would suggest that we are on par to at least meet that again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing this. I think this is, I prefer this to the standardized testing data. I just think it gives us so much more specific information and really shows us what's going on. And thank you for putting in the work, because I know it wasn't easy.
Well, you're welcome. And actually, you know, these are data that we collect in the schools. So all we had to do was ask for it to be gathered. But I also want to commend the reading consultants and the interventionists in the schools, because they've really been critical in helping us think about how to use these data in the most effective ways. Ever since we put in our SRBI program, we've been monitoring as a school, I think, our students much more closely. And we continue to look for more sophisticated ways to use the information that we have.
I would just like to echo Jennifer's comments. I think this is really great information, and this is, I'd like to see even more of these types of presentations. What I'd like to know, that you've only focused on reading, is this kind of information gathered for other educational areas in the elementary school, in the middle schools, in the high school as well?
Okay, we'll start with the elementary schools. We gather benchmark data in science at the elementary schools. So we've, based on the CMT assessment, which is still given, we've identified another, at least once a year, assessment that helps us monitor students' progress towards the expectations expressed by the CMT. That actually goes all the way up through eighth grade. In mathematics, as we've changed our curriculum, we've moved to end-of-unit assessments in math, and those are in either their first or second year of implementation in grades K through five, and will be developed this summer for, well, they've been, we have some in grades six through eight right now, but they need to be revised this summer. Measuring reading performance beyond sixth grade is a challenge, mostly because students don't progress at the same pace in, by the time they get to the middle grades as they do in the elementary grades. And finding measures that give us discrete information once students reach those reading levels is much more challenging. So in the middle school, we tend to use more traditional types of assessments for reading, except for students who are struggling. And for students who are struggling, we use assessment practices, as you've seen here. The other thing that we've done in grades K through eight is implement Common Core-aligned assessments in writing that allow us to measure students against three forms of writing, all three forms which they will find on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And that is in the second year in grades K through five, and the first year in grades six through eight. That also is a rather complex assessment that requires teachers to individually grade students' writing using pre- and post-scores to look at performance growth from the beginning of the year until the end of the year. In the high school, we've just undertaken an assessment audit as part of an assessment reduction grant that we earned from the state. And what we learned from the audit was that there's great variability in the types of summative assessments, those kind of end-of-course or end-of-year assessments that are given to students. And I'm working with the high school administrators right now on a plan or an action plan to begin to refine assessments at the high school, looking at more clearly identifying end-of-course expectations for every course, and thinking about how we're measuring those end-of-year expectations in authentic ways as we move forward. That will likely be a multi-year process, but the process is underway.
Okay. I'm curious, how do you ensure that the assessments are reliable? In other words, how does one teacher have, like, is it subjective? Is it completely objective?
Right. So each of the assessments that I had listed on the board, those formative assessments that we use, are commercially research-based developed assessments that require individual teacher administration. And so part of what we do is every couple of years revisit those administration requirements and have, for example, reading consultants both demonstrate and observe, demonstrate to teachers how to give them and observe teachers giving them. In addition, what the reading consultants tell me is that teachers with great frequency come to them or to their peers to say, this is how a student performed, or this is how a student responded to this question. How would you score that? So we're constantly trying to calibrate to make sure that we reduce the amount of subjectivity in the scoring. And sometimes, if we compare data across classrooms and we see that one teacher's data looks very different from her peers, one of the first things we'll do is go back to the test protocols and look to see how they've been scored, to make sure that we've got consistency in scoring. With writing, we do the same thing. In fact, we often have teachers sit together to score writing, and sometimes we have them score writing of students other than their own, so that, again, we can ensure that validity.
And one last question. The slide that said fall to winter comparison, and you showed, you pulled aside the students who were exceeding in the fall and winter, and they were pretty high numbers. Are all those kids getting Es on their report cards?
Well, so
You know why I'm asking.
Well, and that's a really, that's not a simple question. So the data that I shared with you is the text level. So in order to be proficient at reading a certain complexity of text, students need to demonstrate accuracy. Ninety-five percent of everything they read needs to be accurate. They need to demonstrate fluency, the ability to read in a consistent, fluent manner. And they need to demonstrate comprehension on a limited number of questions. In order to receive an E on the report card, they also need to demonstrate a lot of other things. And so they may receive an E for the text level, that first standard, actually, that I had up there. But there may be other elements of their reading that are not at the exceeds level. So it's not a simple question. And that assessment becomes one measure that teachers use in determining all of that.
Okay, thank you, Kelly, for, Mrs. Liman, excuse me, for an excellent presentation. Okay, approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 6th public hearing, please?
Motion to approve the April 6th public hearing minutes.
Is there a second? Any corrections, omissions? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Gretchen. Okay, I need a motion for the April 6th regular meeting, please.
Motion to approve the April 6th regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Information and proposals? Board committee reports? Paul, you probably don't have a report.
No, our next meeting is May 13th, so I have no current report.
Okay, thank you. Policies and curriculum? Steve?
We just met tonight, Madam Chair, so there's no report.
Okay.
Right now.
Jennifer, PTO advisory council?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone, Monday, May 4th is the hats off to our volunteers, Region 15 Volunteer Dinner, celebrated Kentucky Derby style. Board members should have received an invitation in the mail. If you lost it or need another copy, let me know. It starts at five o'clock at Eight Mile Brook, which is at the Heritage Hotel. Also, the PTO advisory, with the assistance of Mrs. Jane Sargent, is again coordinating referendum day concert and art show. That's May 6th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will be held at both the Southbury Gazette, near Shopright, and the Middlebury Green on Whitmore Road, weather permitting. Also, many local businesses will be offering a voting day discount or specials for all residents who mention voting day. In Middlebury, those businesses are Solano Debt, Thrive Sports and Fitness, Tula Family Enrichment Center, Middlebury Baking Company, Blarney Stone Pizza, Froyo World, Hopbrook Pharmacy, Nature's Goods Market, Pies and Pints, and Defining Moments Salon. In Southbury, Adam Broderick Salon and Spa, Bakes and Cakes Cafe, Den Mo's, De Palma's Pizza, Mikey's Place, Miranda's, Mystique Boutique and Tanning, Newberry Place, Regal Cleaners, Respond If You Please Stationers, Villarinas, and Froyo World, also both Middlebury and Southbury. Thank you.
My thanks to the businesses, that's very kind of them to do that. Any board member comments? Okay, there being none. Superintendent's report, please.
Just the personnel report tonight, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. We have no old business, and we have no new business requiring board action. So announcement of our next future meeting dates. On Tuesday, May 5th, we'll have the district meeting here in this room.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments from citizens?
Thank you, thank you. Comments from citizens? Okay. None? I need new glasses. Dr. Kindle, I need you. Kimball. Okay, Tuesday, May 5th, the district meeting, room 103 at 6:00 p.m. The board members, Marion Manzo was kindly offered to volunteer. I'll be here with her. Any, but any other board member is welcome, but it's not a requirement. Wednesday, May 6th, is the Region 15 Budget Referendum, and the voting hours are from 6:00 until 8:00. I'm sure if they're, are they gonna, are they just doing it at the one place, one polling place? Does anybody know? One polling place, in each town? Okay, thank you. Monday, May 11th, Board of Education meeting will be here in this room. On Wednesday, May 13th, the Finance and Facilities Committee will be meeting at 5:30 at Central Office. And of course, the PTO Dinner will be next Monday, May 4th. Thank you. Hope to see you all there. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good night.